Call this meeting to order and would ask that you stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to the city council meeting, City of Linsburg, June 5th, 2023. And we will turn your attention to item number three, public input. Is there any public input signed up for this evening?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Attention to number four amendments to the agenda. We'll ask our city administrator if there are amendments.
There are none.
There are not. Thank you. Next, we will turn our attention to item number five, the mayor's report. And this is, we've had three individuals recently who have passed away, who have contributed greatly to our city in public service. I just want to mention each one of those. On April 29th, we lost Ken Branch. And Ken was a college professor and a pastor. And he served on this council. And he was a deliverative, knowledgeable, and thoughtful council member, and leading to many good decisions during his tenure. And we want to recognize that. And on behalf of the city, we want to extend our sympathy to Linda and the entire family and thank Dr. Ken Branch for his public service over the years. And then in May, on May 18th, we lost Marvin Anderson. And Marvin served in a lot of ways in the city. And publicly, he was on the zoning appeals board and the design review board. In addition to that, he was an insurance professional, worked at Farmers Alliance, and he contributed by providing information to the state legislature on insurance issues. So a wonderful guy. And on behalf of the City of Linsburg, we want to extend our sympathy to Lee Ann and the entire family. We want to thank Marvin for his wonderful contributions over the year. And then thirdly, over the weekend, Captain Detective Doug Anderson passed away. And he had a law enforcement career of over forty years, four decades. And I think arguably the thing that he will be most remembered for by a whole lot of people is his work with the DARE program. And I have asked the people, young adults, down to young kids, and they remember Detective Doug and the work that he did. And that frankly is going to be extended for generations, no doubt. His work, on behalf of the City of Linsburg, we want to extend our sympathy to Mary Beth and the entire family. And we want to thank Captain Doug Anderson for all his public service over the years. Three really great individuals and came in very quick time. All belong in that council. We will turn our attention to item number six, which is the consent agenda. And the three items on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. They will include the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, May 22nd, 2023, item B, the payroll ordinance number 5428, and item C, purchase order ordinance number 5429. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So. Say.
We have a motion and a second. Is there questions on motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers, press me.
Yes.
Eagle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Peterway.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion is approved and the consent agenda is adopted. I'm going to ask our city administrator, do we have any appointments this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Turn our attention to item eight, committee reports. And we will begin with item A, the planning commission, and Paul Jordan. Paul Jordan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. So the planning commission met on May 30th at 6:00 PM at City Hall and had three items that they discussed. The first two were lot split applications, one for 419 Tompkins Terrace out at Stockholm Estates, and one at 101 North Harrison, which is the dentist's office just on the street. Both were reviewed and passed unanimously by the planning commission, alleviating some issues and creating a better situation to sell at least the one on Tompkins Terrace and also an adjacent property over by the dentist's office. So that was good. They also reviewed the second draft of the appearance guidelines policy that we've all been working on for a number of months now. And they're comfortable with taking that to a public meeting, which is great, and has its design review board, so be looking for a public meeting likely scheduled next week for anybody to attend to give their input on downtown appearance guidelines for signage, buildings, and also the public art. The next item is the design review board, and they met on May 25th at 10:00 AM via Zoom. They had three sign applications for review, all of them passed unanimously. One of them had come back for a second, for a second review after the first one. They had requested some revisions. Again, they also discussed the review of the appearance guidelines, and they're comfortable taking that forward and presenting it to the public for feedback. So again, be looking out for that meeting. That's the update.
Questions, council?
If there is a meeting next week, will we have a chance to review the draft policy prior to the meeting or will they present it?
I will present it after meeting and request additional input at the meeting as well.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Tori. Next question. And administrator, we have a full business.
We do not.
Thank you. Now turn our attention to item 10, new business. And item A is the presentation of the 2022 financial audit. And I'm going to call on David here in a second. And I know Danielle Hollings said Lead Auditor with Adams Brown will be joining us online. And wanted to make note that we were unable to conduct business when she was scheduled to be here in person. And we appreciate very much her changing her schedule to be able to meet online this evening. So with that, David, if you would like to give some introductory comments?
Yep. So we completed our 2022 audit in 2023. That was done by Adams Brown. We have had a great relationship with them. I always enjoy when they come. I feel like it's my report card and just, I also feel it's a great partnership. Danielle does a great job of, anytime I have questions throughout the year, I can always call her. I can email her and get those responses. And so they've been great advocates for us as a city and helping me in my transition into my position. And I just really appreciate it. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Danielle. We'll make sure we got audio first. Can you hear me, Danielle?
I can't. Can you hear me?
Nope.
It's a little thick.
No.
It's, it's my side. It's not yours.
Okay.
Didn't work this way earlier. Let's try it, Danielle.
I agree.
Okay, now try it.
Heard it from a different.
Yeah, it sounded different.
Okay. So working now? No, not really.
Now it says we deserve.
That's good.
John, you can probably hear it over there. Just make sure everything's okay.
He told me not to touch it.
Yeah. It's supposed to come from, it was coming from, I heard it up there.
From the projection.
Push test. I suppose that recorded it. You don't have any questions, but.
Okay, now try.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to share my screen or no?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, can you help, well, you can see that?
Can you make it bigger?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in our hand.
Okay.
See that?
Yep, there we go.
Okay. I have things highlighted just because it's easier for you to see exactly what I'm zoning in on here. Many of you know I take alcohol and I've presented in the past, and I do this very quickly. Hopefully, in a few weeks, you'll have the chance to look through it. So I won't go too far into detail, but if you do have questions, just stop me and I'll try to explain it a little clearer. As you know, you guys have two financial statement audits. The first one that I'm going to go over is on more business type activities, which this is your utility funds. So on the front page, you're going to see it's going to say financial statements with independent audit report. Make sure you're on the right one. And I'm going to turn over to page one and two, three, and this is the independent audit report. On this report, we do give you a qualified opinion on several of the funds. And the reason for this is because this is a crew-based financial statement, and you don't do all of the required GAAP announcements. You don't apply all of them. So we do give a qualified opinion on this. And the main reason is for OPEB, which is other post-deployment benefits, we do not have to do the full accrual on that. That would require you to hire a actuarial. So any funds that have payroll with benefits in it, we do qualify that as a material adjustment that would need to be done. So the revenue collection and then the remaining fund information, which is your reserve funds on your utilities, those are unmodified, which is an independent that I assume you can receive. And that is really the gist of why all these three paragraphs are staying gay, Davey. And I'm not going to go into detail on this report simply because it's only on your utility funds. It's also a crew base, so it's a little more complicated. But I do encourage reading through the management's discussion and analysis. That gives you a fairly state comparative to the prior year, so you can kind of see how those utility funds are doing. So then I'm going to jump on over to the other financial statement. And this is the financial statement that you keep your books on. It's the GAAP waiver that you approve every year. And I'm going to turn to page one on it. Let me zoom in on it, too. And right here at the top, we again, we give you an adverse opinion, which is basically we're just not giving you an opinion on GAAP. That's because you weigh GAAP and you follow regulatory basis instead. And the third paragraph down right here, we are stating you receive an unmodified opinion. That's the cleanest opinion you can receive. Basically, they're stating we don't believe there's any material. The statements are the financials. The independent audit report then goes into the requirements of management as well as what the auditors are responsible for. And I encourage you to read through that, just so you know what exactly we're looking at when we do the audit. And then I'm going to flip on over to page four. And this is the financial statement that we're issuing that opinion on. And at the end of the year, page 1231, you have nine point, almost nine point seven million in uncovered cash balance. This is a decrease of about 755,000 over the prior year. The next several pages are the. I got blurred. I don't know if that's your screen being too. Then up to the financial statement. This year, K-MAG did have one new standard that they put into place. Sorry? Okay. There is a new lease standard that is out there. And for K-MAG, it's just a matter of updating the windows and possibly including additional leases that you have not included in the past. We did look at a bunch of the different operating leases that you have, and they were not materials and financials, so we did not include them in there this year. So I'm going to kind of flip through these because there won't be anything else new. On page nine, we also do look at compliance with Kansas statutes. We did have a couple compliance violations this year. The first one is the first and third quarter financial statements were not published, or we don't necessarily know if they were published. We still have proof they were published. And then the second one, the city was not properly bonded for the substation project. Any public work contracts over a hundred thousand would have to have a performance spot, and we could not find their located performance spot on that project. Keep on looking here. On page 15, this is the long-term debt schedule. And I mentioned here you had off 5.5 million outstanding debt, and it's expected to be paid off in 2047. And page 16, this is our summary of the district's actual budget. This gives you an idea of where you are at compared to the budget for each individual fund. And there is no budget violations that occurred during the year. And then the next remaining pages is the statements, actual to prior year comparative as well as to the budget. And I encourage you to go through these if you just want to see the more detail of where things, the end of that of each individual fund, but I'm not going to go through that in detail. If you have a question you would like me to answer, I will pause for just a second. I can't see you, so if you have something, someone will have to yell at me to stop.
You're just fine.
Okay. This is the final piece of the audit package is the government's letter to you. This is just to let you know if we have any difficulties encountered as we're performing the audit, if there were any disagreements with management, if there's any other finding issues. We do do a risk assessment at the beginning. If our risk assessment changes, we have to let, you know that. It didn't. It was as expected. And then we also go into just some audit recommendations that we may have from management. And we only have a couple. The first one is we just recommend supporting documentation for journal entries. They have them all. They just didn't have the supporting documentation to go with them. And so we just recommend keeping that so you can see clearly what the journal entry was for. And then we do have one material weakness, which is what we consider maybe a more significant internal control. And this is on just the business activities audit, so not, it's not the K-MAG audit. This is then regarding construction in progress. And that is one of those accrual adjustments that is a little bit challenging is making sure you get all of the capital assets. And especially when you have projects going on, making sure that we're recording those as construction in progress in the year that they're taking place. So we did have a material adjusting entry to pose to get that to actual. And that is the audit on that shelf. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, council? Seeing no questions.
Okay. Nothing else for me.
Okay.
All right. Well, that was, that was easy. I want to thank me to Ted and the board for allowing me to do this tonight. I have ten minutes to get to my softball game, so I appreciate you guys allowing me to do the team tonight. And I hope you guys will have a good evening.
Thanks for Danielle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, council, the recommendation for this evening would be a motion to accept 2022 audit as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, we'll have our clerk call roll.
Councilmembers, down.
Yes.
Peterway.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Eagle.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. And thank you, David, for your work on this as well. And with that, we'll turn our attention to item B, the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum budget request. And I will call on our city administrator, Chris Moore.
Thank you. This evening, we will hear from both the Old Mill and the Linsburg Community Library. First up for item B is the Linsburg Old Mill Swedish Heritage Museum. And Caroline DeFilippis will be presenting on their behalf this evening.
Welcome, Caroline.
There is desire within the community to preserve and enhance the entire Old Mill campus. That's not from me. That's from the city's comprehensive plan. Next slide.
Oops.
Too many slides. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Caroline DeFilippis, and I am the Community Development Director at the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum. We're very grateful for having the time tonight to talk with you about the future of the museum. Next slide. Tonight, I will present shortly the current structure, the ongoing project that we have at the museum. I will talk about the grants that have been granted to the museum. I will brush onto the budgets, and I will talk about our partnerships. Next slide. Next slide. So in August 2021, the MacPherson County Old Mill Museum became the Linsburg Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum, effectively passing from, coming from being a county-owned to being a private nonprofit that is directed by a board of directors. Next slide, please. Some of the names you might recognize. But I will not go over all the names. But I don't go over the team. The team is comprised three people, Leran Alam, Executive Director, myself, and Adam Fratz, as well, he's here as well, our communication, our marketing and communication director. We also are very glad over the summer to start welcoming our first intern, Tyler Amm from Bethany College, and he will be with us as well this fall semester. And we also have one part-time employee for cleaning purposes. Next slide, please. With a new team and a new structure came a new strategic plan, and it has been given to you in the back in the bag tonight for you to review at your, whenever you can, if it's not already. And next slide, please. Some of the objectives for 2025 include increasing the offering in terms of events and exhibitions, increase the attendance by 133%, increase our sales revenue by 55%, grow our membership 190%, and I think we're already 70% there, increase the enrollment by $1 million, complete six critical maintenance projects. Next slide, please. On average, the museum receives 6,000 visitors every year, and half of them are children. Next slide. For those who haven't been to the museum in a long time, and we know that is the case for a lot of people, fortunately, we're working on that. North of Mill Street, there is Heritage Square and the Swedish Pavilion. South of Mill Street, we've got the Old Mill. And south of the river, the Smoky Hill River, we've got the campground as well. All that is part of the museum. Next slide, please. All throughout the year, we host a lot of community events such as Mill Fest that just happened at the beginning of May and received approximately 1,000 visitors over two days. And we also have Midsummer coming in two weeks, so we hope to see you there. We've got Endings Fest, and this year, I'm part of the programming committee, and we're hoping to really develop what the activities in Heritage Square. We've got Heritage Christmas and got several general workshops that we present throughout the year. Next slide, please. This year, we also started to offer some speakers. We're working with Humane Institute in Kansas for that. In March, we had our first Oxford Room at Kansas that was fairly well attended for a first time, thirty people in attendance, and well received. Next slide, please. We're also trying, as I said, to develop new exhibitions. And at the beginning of the year, we had a temporary exhibition on Theodore Roosevelt, if you missed it, too bad. But we are hopeful to offer more temporary exhibitions such as Theodore Roosevelt. Next slide. We're also trying to renew some of our exhibition pieces such as this timeline called Old Mill New Life. And this one is meant to stay a little longer, so you're still welcome to come and visit and see for yourself. We're also asking for the public for their input on where the next 125 years will take us and take the museum. Next slide, please. We're also working a lot at developing our partnerships. For instance, that's not all the partners we're working with, but some of the main names are Case State. We have six or seven people from Case State coming from Mill Fest, and they really enjoyed themselves. They gave tour to the public. And we think that we can really develop the relationship with them moving forward with the milling program at Case State. relationship with them moving forward with the milling program at Case State. We also work for the first time with Zonan Institute in San Lina, and we're really looking forward to work with them a little bit more, because we believe they represent the future of our future, and that would be a good angle to take in to offer the kind of protection we want to have at the museum. And as I mentioned, we're also working with many districts to offer more speakers. Next slide, please. Since last year, the museum raised more than 146,000 in community support, which is absolutely amazing. We cannot expect to have such an overwhelming support. We have to note that 60% of it came from one single donor, and we're very, very grateful for this donor, but it's a little bit precarious for us, because moving forward, it puts us in a position where we're probably just on a few handful of people, we need a broad network of support. Next slide, please. But as you can see, since 2021, we asked for support and we received it, and for that, again, we're very grateful for everyone that contributed, and we are really hopeful that for 2023, our projections are the same, equal to 2022, and we are already halfway there, so we have June, so we've got the hopes that we will meet our target by the end of the year. Next slide. The number of memberships and donation increased significantly since 2021, as you can see, reaching 148, no, it's actually not up to date, 148 members. Again, we asked people to be present, and they answered overwhelmingly. Next slide, please. Heritage Square helps preserve much of the history of early MacPherson County settlers and serves as the heart of several festivals and events. Again, not my words, but from the city comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Next slide. We're working on several projects, the summer is going to be very busy down at the museum. We're going to have a water mitigation project to preserve the old mill from water damage. Next slide, please. We're also working on the upper exterior walls repair on the old mill. Next slide. We are going to repair the front porch of the Swedish Pavilion, which is, as you can see, much today. Next slide, please. We're going to replace the windows of the Swedish Pavilion. Next slide. And we're going to repaint the Swedish Pavilion. All of that, by the end of the year, we're hoping, depending on weather and our contractors, but it's underway. Next slide, please. We're not only working on the buildings, we're also working on the team. We are investing into professional training, and all the staff already underwent fundraising boot camp to train and fundraising efforts, and is assigned a contractor now for another year of training for the entire team, again, for fundraising purposes. Next slide, please. We are working really hard based on the assessment that has been done in the past, well, in the past, not that long ago, but it was before my time. Maybe some of you even participated into the conversations, but we're basing that on the conversations that already happened in the community, and we're trying to have more community conversation in order to guide us and to work on the next strategic plan, because the one you have in your hands is for just two years, that was really just to get us going and get us started somewhere, but we're already working on the strategic plan for 2025, 2030, and also on a vision for objective 2050, meaning that we're just trying to define where we're going to be, what role are we going to play in the community, where the Lindborgians wants us to go with the museum. Next slide, please. In terms of strategic development, we are looking internally at the moment, having a lot of conversation to see, again, what the museum is going to be in the next decades upcoming, and this could be a change of identity, it could be a change of purpose, but we are, we're open to anything at this moment, and having a lot of conversation. Next slide, please. Stefan Elliott conducted an assessment in 2019, again, that was before my time, as part of the ongoing discussions related to future ownership and purpose of the Old Mill Museum, confirming the property as an asset to Lindborg. Not my words, but coming from the city comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. If you've seen the news lately, if you read the news records, you might have seen that the museum has been receiving a lot of grants lately. Next slide, please. Up too far. Since last year, the museum brought more than half a million through grants through the community, which has been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort, and it paid off. Next slide, please. Those are some of the grants that we've been awarded. I'm not going to go through in detail, but I'm happy to contribute if you have any questions on that. Next slide, please. As you can see, since 2018, the amount of grants received has increased significantly. We are expecting for 2024 to see it increase slightly or stabilize, but efforts have been made and results are here. Next slide, please. This grant supports the work of more than 10 local businesses and contractors. By supporting us and by having, or having grant dollars supporting the museum, it's not, it's not just the team, like, it's only three people supporting, it's a lot of people we rely on to keep the doors open, to keep the lights on, that's at least 10, but I believe it's more closer, closer to 15 or 20 people, companies. Next slide, please. The Swedish Pavilion is one of the most widely recognized historic sites in Lindborg, and we hope to keep it that way, we're working really hard to keep it that way. Again, that's a quote from the comprehensive plan. Next slide. Next slide. And last year, the team and I went to the Kansas Museum Association Conference, and there's one takeaway that I took from the conference was that the ideal budget of a museum comes from a third of its activities, a third of its endowments, and a third of public fund. So ideally, next slide, please, it would look like that, of course, 90,000 in each bracket. The current, current finance, next slide, please, are all looking like that. So we're far, far from it for the moment, especially now endowments and activities are halfway there. Our projection for 2024, next slide, please. With the activities going up at 66,000, we're getting there, but we're not there yet, but luckily, next slide, please. Our budget looks more like that, so our projection for 2024 are 66,000 from our activities, that's people visiting the museum, or getting, or saying, of the campground, for instance. 16,000 from endowment, because that's not counting our goal objective to raise by a million, and we're hoping to see results already in 2024, but we cannot promise anything. Public fund, then we've got the archives that we're still hosting from the county, and we're also planning on having a lot of efforts still made in fundraising, so I think 70,000 coming from fundraising efforts. Next slide, please. Another quote, the last quote of the night, and this time from the OECD, the Organization for Economic Cooperation, sorry, I can't read it from there.
I forgot the operation in the...
Thank you very much. Museums and cultural heritage are powerful assets for local development. Next slide, please. What does it mean for our partnership? Museums and cultural heritage help attract tourists, bring revenue, regenerate local economies, promote inclusion, boost cultural diversity, and reinvent territorial identity when it's needed. Not really needed in Lindborg, but who knows? Next slide, please. Museums also contribute to social cohesion, civic engagement, health, and well-being of not only the visitors, but Lindborgians as well. Next slide. With that in mind, today, we ask our city council to consider a $50,000 contribution to the museum. Next slide. Your financial contributions support our operation, plain and simple, which is helps us keep the lights on and the door open, but it also helps us in our grant application. When we apply for grants up to, you know, 2.7 million, coming in with the city as partners means a lot to the people we apply for, to the people we apply to. It also supports our partnership. If you keep supporting us, it means that we keep having a conversation about where are we going and how are we going there, and how are we working together. It also supports, as I mentioned earlier, local contractors and businesses. Again, it's not just us, it's all the people that makes us happen, that's all the people that keep us open. It supports our sustainable development. By supporting us financially in 2024, it allows us to keep working on developing the strategic plans that we need to keep, keep outdoors open and keep offering what we have to offer to our visitors and Lindborgians. And finally, last but not least, it supports the cultural offerings of the city. We've got a lot to offer in Lindborg, and we intend to give it that way. Next slide. Thank you very much for your attention, and do you have any questions?
Thank you, Caroline. Questions for Caroline from the city council?
I have one. Do you feel there's been a disadvantage since that South Bridge was closed with pedestrian traffic only?
It's been brought up a lot, especially in our, in our meetings, a lot of people contribute when they go to the campground, so I would say the short answer would be yes, I suppose, yes.
It looks like MacPherson County is pulling completely out of funding by 2025, they're not going to contribute anything at all going forward.
From the county?
Yeah.
At the moment, no, we still don't intend to, like, go out without, you know, we intend to not go out without advice, and we are intent to keep asking and trying to work on our relationship with the county, but as of today, no, we do not have any funding funds from the county after 2025.
Can you explain what the archives revenue item is?
Sure, yeah, so the museum, we host in our basement, the county archive, so a lot of registry, and maybe you can help me answer this one.
Lenora, you want to tell us who you are and...
Hi, I'm Lenora Linam, I am the Detective Director of the museum, and so we have housed the, we are the county archives, and when the transition took place, the decision by the county was to leave the archives in place at the museum, and so they are currently paying us rent, which is probably 23,000 or so dollars a year, so we're hoping that that will continue.
And a lot of people come into this with psychos.
Is that like, do we just house the stuff there, or do we also provide support and personnel going find things for them as well on that 2025?
Yeah, so I have a lot of people who stop to do geology research, and right now, I'm the primary person that does that, and we also do offer that by email, you know, people that call, I do look up. We also have on our website indexes to look up, records and stuff off the, partner's requests and stuff, and again, I'm the primary person that's been doing this area, and sending those off to partners.
But that will pay us for storing them, not for doing those services? Or they only pay...
Right, they're paying for storage, but, but the people that won't, that stop doing it, they can't be. So you can hire me basically right now for $30 an hour to do research and records.
And those fees go into the activities income?
Right, yes.
Further questions?
Question on the pro forma financial statements, we have a line endowment, is that the amount that you're expecting to be able to draw from the endowment? And so what's your balance of your endowment fund currently? How do you hope to get there?
Our current balance, I believe, is right at $100,000, we'll have to increase that by a million.
Yeah, sort of different funds, just different nation, and yeah.
Do you already have 400,000 in the end?
Right, so I think this year, we're scheduled to get about 15,000 off the interest.
I noticed on this financial statement has no grants in it, but you also have no project expenses. I assume you're mainly writing grants for other projects, though?
Absolutely, I do encourage you to just not contribute any further to the financial pro forma, but yes, absolutely, any grant that we add are for projects, so that we should match any of the...
Further questions, counsel? Lenora or Caroline, would you want to introduce here, anyone that you've got with you?
Yeah, so we also have Adam Park here, who is the, our Marketing and Communications Director, and I think he's been doing a fabulous job with the social media and his newsletter and...
Yes, we also have one member less, Tony.
Caroline. Okay, well, thank you all for being here this evening, and thank you, Caroline, for the excellent presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And again, I will call on our administrator for part two.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you to the Old Mill team. I should mention, I should have done this before I kicked them up, city council and for any watching, so this evening, these budget presentations are for us to consider, these budget requests, and then we will then take this information and use it to help develop our 2024 operating budget. There's no action required this evening, so these are just presentation format. Next up, we have Susannah Swenson with the Lindborg Community Library, and she will present their budgets and their overall project update and vision, and all of those ingredients people like to ask.
Welcome, Suzanne.
Good evening. So tonight, I'd like to share highlights from the library's 2024 proposed budget request. If you want to follow along, I will be citing page numbers from the document we have with you, and if you have questions, feel free to ask as I go along or at the end. So pages one through three present the value of library services provided and examples on the excellent return on investment. There at the top, we have just our library vision and the value of library services provided. The current median home, median home in Lindborg has a tax impact of approximately $52.95, but then if you look at our examples of individual library use, each of those is an actual person, they have their names, their patient A, B, and C, so that you don't, we protect everyone's privacy, but having over $1,000 of value is not extraordinary. It's very easy for someone to get $50 of value in a single library visit. With the prices of books, that's three books, or two books, depending on what format you have. And on that page two, we have comparisons of how we've done for circulation and for programming events between quarter one of 2023, 2022, and 2021. As you can see, they are increasing for the total library collections, the value given to the community in the first quarter of 2023 was $72,585, and that is using actual price of the different materials, as opposed to $58,000 the year before and $42,000 the year before. And program events, we have more than double valued the value to the community this year, and that is because we are able to provide more programs because we have an additional staff person now. So as you can see, we have had 80 events as opposed to 32 last year, we've had attendance of 1,354 as opposed to 488, which is a value of $10,692 given to the community in the first quarter, plus April, so January through April.
Do you mind if we ask questions along the way?
Oh, yeah, please do.
So about the previous table there, so tell me about how that's calculated, so just going to the bottom, well, let's take the adult, the top one, 1322, so then that's just, you picked a value for the number of book for the...
No, no, so that number of circulation, that's how many adult fiction, adult nonfiction books were checked out.
Checked out, and then the next column, though, you multiply that by a value per book.
Yes, yeah, so our circulation system, in it, there is a value attached to each item, so if this book costs $30, that book costs $28.
Specific per item checked out.
It is specific per item checked out.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and so that's why it's not standardized, because adult books cost less than audiobooks, which cost more than DVDs, so that is... So that is specific to the items that were circulated.
Perfect, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. And then on page three, we talk about technology services, which is huge. A week and a half ago, our printer decided to not work. And it was very, very obvious how much of a service that is to our community. We were waiting for about a week for the parts to come in. And there were many people who come in to use printing services. That is one of the things that is, I think it's about the only thing that is not a free service. We do charge ten cents a page for black and white printing. Everything else is free.
Does that cover the expense?
I'm not sure if it does anymore. I would, I would have to calculate that. But that, that has been the price that it has been for over ten years. So it could be possible that it needs raised, but yeah. And then also interlibrary loan services are huge. It, that's something that also impacts how much grant and aid we receive. When we give more, our regional library system gives us more. So last year, we received fifteen thousand dollars partly based off of how many interlibrary loans we were able to loan to other libraries. And being able to do as much is based off of having another staff person who's able to fill requests and send them off. It's time consuming, but it's very, it helps every, every library in the state be more efficient of resources. So page four has general information on tax levies for libraries. So the library has a specific tax levy line. They're independent from all other city entities. And then listed there are different state statutes governing library tax levies. Page five presents library funding comparisons. So on this table, I have our comparison libraries. Mount Ridge is there, even though they're significantly smaller than us because they are the closest in size in McPherson County. Heston, Kingman, and Lyons are all within our same qualification of service population within our region. There are seven library regions in Kansas and ours is South Central Kansas Library System. So those are the three closest in size to us. As you can see, we each have a different, you know, value of one mil. But then we have the budget authority of what we had in 2023. And so you see our middle levy rates. The last two columns there are the percentage comparison to Linsburg, the value of one mil, and then the comparison value to Linsburg for funding, actual funding. So if it was an exact comparison, then Mount Ridge would be sixty-seven percent of the value of a mil, sixty-seven percent value of funding. So as you can see, they have, they have a less valuable mil levy, but they get more outright funds. So we are funded underneath what McPherson, what Mount Ridge library is funded at. Heston, we recently visited them to see some of the different things that they're going and doing and ideas of what we could possibly bring to Linsburg. They have a much more valuable value of a mil and they're also much more funded. So if we would be exactly comparable to Heston, we would hope to have about, that they'd have about a hundred and twenty-nine percent of our value of a mil and only be funded about a hundred and twenty-nine percent more. But they are funded over two hundred and fifty-eight times what library is here in Linsburg. However, given all that, we are very appreciative of increased funding over the past couple of years. We're still underfunded, but it, that, those gaps are beginning to get smaller. And so we are not nearly as underfunded as we have been in previous years. Pages six through nine present our proposed budget requests for 2024. Page six is the proposed budget income. This does include a mil levy increase that would raise property tax impact on the median household by about twenty dollars from the current estimate of fifty-two ninety-five to an estimated new total of seventy-two twenty-one. And again, you had mentioned grants earlier. We don't budget for grants because most of these are competitive. They're not guaranteed. The exception is sickle's grant and aid and State of Kansas grant and aid. Those are not competitive and they are guaranteed every year, so that's why they are included in the budget. On page seven, you can see that capital improvement does not have any expense listed. We are doing the library building project and we hope to have lots of expense for capital improvement next year. However, we are wanting to explore alternative funding options before doing regular budget income to fund the remodel. And there's also some things based on square footage that we've increased. They're estimated at a hundred and twenty-five percent of previous because that's about how much the addition of one oh nine adds to our square footage. After this year, we'll have a better, more accurate estimate of how much that should actually be. Page eight, and there that has the most, yes.
I guess I do have a question about the mil increase that you're talking about. Looking at your spreadsheet and budgets, if that were to occur, you would, since two thousand twenty-one, you'd almost doubled the amount. I guess I would be more interested than knowing what addition you're bringing to the community versus just saying we're underfunded compared to other communities.
Sure.
To me, that doesn't mean much, but to double the tax burden of our citizens, what are we going to double the benefits?
Well, we did this year. We did this year. So if you go back, and this is, this is not doubled. This is just the increase we had from 2022 to 2023. Our program events, it is doubled. We're, we had eighty events as opposed to thirty-two. And we had a value in the community of ten thousand as opposed to four thousand of what we were able to provide to the community. And that's just events. That's not circulation. Again, on circulation, it's not the same. Twenty twenty-one, we were able to provide forty-two thousand dollars of service for circulation of physical items. Twenty twenty-three, we provided seventy-two thousand. So it, it's greatly increasing the amount of services we can provide. And part of what is the main thing that is, that is increasing the mil levy for this is to add additional staff people so that the library could be open more hours. It's been requested by the community that we be open later in the evenings so that we can better provide services to working families. Right now, we're closing at six o'clock. We can't, we can't staff it later than that with our current team. It puts people, it doesn't work well. And so the main thing that we, that we would be spending more money on is staff so that we can be open until eight o'clock Monday through Friday.
Well, I do have, one thing that, because we ran into this pretty often, comparisons and so on. One thing that I've always hated with them is it seems like somebody will pick four or five cities and I'll sit there and go, well, about Marysville, about Walton, what about these? Did you just candy pick the ones that painted a picture you wanted?
Sure.
Sometimes it's nice to actually add a little bit more info, even if there's a few that don't support that. It makes it where I feel a little more secure. Hey, yeah, there are a couple other ones out there that are underfunded. That doesn't mean you need to be underfunded, but at least it makes it seem like it's not one side of things.
And I would, and I would say that Lyons is probably the, the one for there. Is that, you know, we're, we're getting close to what Lyons is funded. I have in fact included Marysville. Marysville, we are significantly underfunded compared to Marysville. So it may be, presented a better picture for us to get more funded if we would have included them. But I thought they're in a different library system. They're in North. Sorry, but I mean, I could definitely get you those numbers too.
No, it's just one of those things that sometimes it paints a more complete picture is all. I don't doubt it. I do know from what I've heard around the community, you've been doing a lot more with the same that you guys had years ago.
Sure.
So you're doing better.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's been a lot more going on. Yeah, and then that, page eight, that thing about the, the most insignificant is the increase in payroll. That's all from there. And then just page nine. Utility line items are based on about a hundred and twenty-five percent of previous. I don't think that will be exactly the best estimate, but that's our best guess right now. We'll know better at the end of the year which of that should be. So kind of in conclusion, the library provides access to resources and services beyond what patrons can afford on their own. And the need of library services is continuing to grow and expand of more and more of what that should look like. And we look forward to serving our community well, partnering with others to be a thriving contributor to the quality of life available in Linsburg. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Suzanne. Other questions from the council? Any further questions? Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Suzanne. Thanks for being here this evening. And council, as was noted, we will consider, as a council, budget requests as part of the city's 2024 operating budget preparation. We will take no action this evening. So we'll turn our attention to item D.
It looks like on the, on page eight, there's some zeros in some of the employment categories that I don't think would be zero.
Yes. Yeah, so on, on page eight, there's zeros in, that is because when we do the budget, the net payroll is actually gross payroll for this proposed budget. So that is gross rather than net.
Okay.
So all of those zeros, those are part of that.
So for the actuals, we have to split it out by the, all these subcategories?
Yes, yeah. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, council, we'll turn our attention to the next item of business, which is sludge wagon tires. And I'll call on.
Chris was a little worried about following the library.
Chris, I am sorry for the hate for.
I said I love the sludge wagon.
One of my first council meetings, we approved sludge wagon tires because it stuck with me. Are we now replacing those tires?
We're replacing those tires now. They've worn out.
Okay, thank you.
Well, do we need any explanation on this? We come to you tonight for these tires for the sludge wagon because we are approaching this a little bit differently. This was in the CIP for next year to replace the entire wagon. We are looking at some other options as far as possibly contract services to deal with this, alleviate the crew's responsibility to have to do this all the time and possibly save some money and free them up to do some extra work. That being said, we didn't have money budgeted to replace the tires, which was done on, I believe, a five-year basis. So we are going to need to replace the tires. Part of the reason we're looking at contract services is because it's getting harder and harder to find places to haul sledge. Thus, we're wearing out the tires a little bit more because we're having to drive farther to find land to get rid of the sledge. So all in all, we're, we're hoping to do this in a different fashion. But for right now, we need to replace these tires before we end up having a puncture or something else and have a major concern on the road while we're hauling sledge to the fields. So we just come to you for a motion to approve the quote from Rod's Tire and Service for six thousand dollars for tires for the nun sludge wagon. Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Seeing no questions from the council. Thank you, Chris. Council, we have a recommendation, a motion to approve the quote from Rod's Tire and Service for six thousand dollars. Is there a motion to?
Second.
Second.
Motion, second. We have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion?
I did see you requested four quotes. I'm guessing the fourth person never got back to you.
Correct. Okay, thank you, council. Seeing no questions, I'll have the city clerk call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Vanderweil?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion is approved. And we'll turn our attention to item E, the letter of agreement and bill of sale for transformer. Again, I'll call on Chris Lindholm. Part of the substation transformer project will include a new metering system and acquisition of the current substation transformer from Evergy. Those two components have been included in the financial part of the project and have already been approved. This letter of agreement and bill of sale basically just covers the agreement for the transfer, our ownership transfer of the substation transformer and outlines how that will take place. The project is moving along as scheduled. And so we need to take care of this to make sure that the metering system can be put in place in time for the energizing of the new substation transformer when it gets in and gets ready. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the letter of agreement and the bill of sale between the city of Linsburg and Evergy for the purchase of the current substation transformer and the assets listed in the agreement. Thank you, Chris. Questions from the council? For Chris? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Council, the recommendation is to approve a letter of agreement and the bill of sale between the city of Linsburg and Evergy for the purchase of the current substation transformer and assets listed in the agreement. Are there, is there a motion to that effect?
Seven. Seven.
We have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? We point out to, to the public that this was studied as study session. And so a lot of thought has gone into this and to this recommendation. We have a motion and a second. And seeing no questions, I'll have our city clerk call, please.
Councilmember Febo?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweil?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion is approved. We will now turn our attention to item F, Midsummer's Festival Special Event Request. And we will call on our city clerk, Roxy Shubridg, to, to speak to those applications.
The city received an application from Midsummer's Committee for a special event cereal while beverage permit for June seventeenth for the Midsummer's festivities. It would be from ten AM to eight PM, the North Shop there in Riverside Park. They would put out a temporary perimeter fence, some of those orange hives fences. They would have only one entry point on the north end. The American Legion, who has, they have been the ones who have been linsberning your gardens at the previous couple of conferences. They would be the ones operating the beer garden again. They'll be checking IDs, initiative risk against, it's paid for and center. The background check has been completed by KDI, a person who has completed the application and the papers have been made. We are looking for a motion to approve a special event cereal while beverage permit for June seventeenth for Midsummer's Committee.
Are there questions for Roxy regarding the recommendation?
Roxy, the Legion is posted. Roxy, the Legion has hosted similar, uh, beer gardens before, but not one for Midsummer's. Is this?
I don't believe they definitely have one for Midsummer's. But yeah, they have several.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, uh, council, the recommendation is to approve the special event cereal malt beverage permit for June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three for the Midsummer's Committee. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Other questions on the motion? Seeing no, uh, questions, we'll have, ask the city clerk to call, please.
Council members.
Vanderweil.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bruce, or sorry, both.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
I only forget her, so. She's not even here.
Thank you, council, motion, uh, is approved. And, uh, we have a need for an executive session soon. That's good news. Item twelve, is there other business that, uh, has come before the city this evening? Seeing no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of a motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, we are adjourned, thank you, council.
Hey, Mary, you have just a moment?